Meeting of the Three Lakes Board of Education. If everyone would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, native visitor with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we will move right into the Administrator's Report on the Agenda Posting.
The Agenda was posted at Three Lakes School and Sugar Camp School by email, the Town of Three Lakes, Town of Monaco, Town of Sugar Camp, and the Demer Library. Media notified via email included the Vilas County News, Northwoods River News, WRJO News, WXPR Radio, and media notified by mail was WACD, WATK Radio.
Thank you. Next, we move on to Amendments and Approval of the Agenda. No amendments?
There are no amendments.
Okay, when someone is ready, I will take a motion on Agenda Approval.
I'll make a motion to approve the Agenda.
One second.
Okay, we have a motion by Stacy, second by Mitch. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next we move on to minutes of the October 16th, 2024 Regular Meeting and the October 16th, 2024 Budget Hearing and Annual Meeting. Any additions, changes?
No.
Okay, if not, I will take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the School Board Regular Meeting Minutes and the Budget Hearing and Annual Meeting Minutes as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Josh, second by Stacy. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, and next we move to the Treasurer's Report.
I make a motion to approve the checks stated October 11th, 2024 through November 13th, 2024 for accounts available, ACH Checks 242-500028, number 242-500088, Regular Checks number 130377, number 130490, Manual Checks number 5765, 5779, Wire Transfers number 2024-00030 and 2024-00062 in amount of $747,000, $107,377, and ACH Payroll Checks number 900043979 and 900044221, and Regular Payroll Checks number 59372 and 59387 in the amount of $394,035.40 for a total amount of $1,141,208.77.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mitch, second by Michelle. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unheard, motion carries. Next, we move to Public Comments. Is there any comments from visitors regarding any of the posted Agenda items? Okay. Hearing none, we will move on to the Administrator's Report.
Okay, I'm going to just do a very quick report on the release of the Three Lakes School District Report Cards. They were released yesterday. Our results are very similar to last year. What I did do for the, on the Board's behalf, so you could take a quick look, is I did make you some copies of what I had shared with you last year with districts that are neighboring districts, if you would like to take a look. And I didn't do schools or anything. We'll do a thorough report next month where we break down our own data and we look at our individual schools and we talk about our areas that we're focusing on for improvement, the gains that have been made and our programming and how it's supporting our kids and their learning needs. So if you take a quick look at what I shared with you and for those in the audience, Three Lakes School District ranked at 73.2. That's the number, and again, it exceeded expectations. The number last year was 76, and I want to caution everyone not to go by the number as much as, or a kind of a referral to, they've adjusted the grading system that they're doing at DPI, and so there's been a recalculation, so it's very hard for comparables. It doesn't mean we went down in scores. We still exceed expectations, which is very good. We're doing what we need to do. But there's some areas where the weightedness of the growth score versus the academic score has been reflected a little bit differently. So, we are doing well. Our neighbor Tomahawk, they also exceeded expectations as did Ben, Beecher Dunbar Pembine and Northland Pines. And then our other neighbors that meet expectations included Elko Phelps, Anago, Wabino, and Rhinelander. And then there are a couple of schools within our conference and our area that are not meeting expectations or meeting few expectations at this point. And I just left those in there for your reference. So overall, we are doing very well by the individual schools. Very pleased to see the growth continue and the academics continue. When we get into this a little bit more next month, I'd like to talk a bit to you to help you understand that, in a way, our school, because we have some pretty high achieving scores and we've got more improvement to make, but we have very little in the way of the groups that you look at for given consideration, like your Free and Reduced or some of the other subcategories, that our scores aren't helped as much as maybe some other schools are. So please don't make this a comparison to a comparison. It's just one point of many that helps us refer to how we're doing. Questions that you may have on this initial report, which is very good, and my congratulations to all the staff and students and everybody doing their part to continue the success in our district.
Thank you.
With that, you're welcome.
Next, we'll move on to New Business and December Meeting Dates.
Our regular meeting is scheduled for December 18th at Three Lakes at 6:00 PM.
Next, we move on to Consider Approval of the Personnel Report of New Hires and Resignations.
Okay, let me just find a moment to pull that out. Our hirings to report include George Lurvy, Boys Varsity Head Basketball Coach, Todd Ria, Boys Basketball Volunteer Coach, Jordan Lurvy, Boys Basketball Volunteer Coach, and Jack Wales, Boys Basketball Volunteer Coach. Resignations include Brad Volkman, Boys Varsity Head Basketball Coach, and Carly Veers, Varsity Track Coach. I'm sorry.
It says Jake.
It says Jake in here. I just want him to earn his keep. I apologize. Thank you for that correction. Jake Wales as Boys Basketball Volunteer Coach. And I had the glasses on, too. My apologies.
Just one point, thank you. Basketball season is upon us, so great job in getting individuals ready and able to start the season. Okay, if there's not any questions, I would take a motion for the Personnel Report.
I'll make a motion to approve the Personnel Report as presented.
One second.
Okay, we have a motion by Josh, second by Mitch. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we move to Consider Field Trip Request Overnight for the Fifth Grade.
This is one that comes before you because it is an overnight request. It's a new request, and it won't take us very long. I want Jeff to know that he can leave as soon as we're done with this because we have a lengthy meeting ahead of us. Jeff has a proposal to take his class on an overnight trip, so I'm going to ask him and Steve to share the information with you.
Thank you. Good evening. So this would be a trip to the Northern Lakes Impact Center, which is Crescent Lake, just south of Rhine River. Maybe you're familiar with it. They've done a lot of work with students in the past. They've had a lot of students come and go to schools, and they do an overnight option, which would be a lot of outdoor education, critical thinking skills, problem solving, team building, activities. They have it all set up. I mean, they literally, I talked to Maria yesterday who's there, and she just said that, as a teacher, you just show up. Your job is to aid, your job is to support. You don't have to plan anything. To me, that sounded great. A long list of things that match the Wisconsin State Standards, a lot of social science that I was very impressed with, options that I can choose my students. If this is approved, can have some impact into that. And I did ask her, I said, you know, one of my concerns would be safety. Is this a safe place for my students? And she assured me, there's tons of training as far as first year spotters are nearby, the staff is AED, CPR trained. I mean, stuff that went over my head, but she was, they're definitely the state of Wisconsin approved and, you know, being a camp, and they have to have that in place. So assured me that. And then as far as where the students would sleep, there's cabins, and they have four students to a room. There's separate rooms. Adults can sleep in a different room. You'd be near students, but you wouldn't have to be with them. And it's like a dining hall, kitchen, and they provide all the food. Just sounds like a really neat experience. Outdoor education is something that means a lot to me. I've had a chance as a student myself to do that in fourth grade, and then I led some other kids at Kettle Mountain District when I was there in fourth grade as well. So, sounds a lot of fun, a lot of work would have to go into making it a reality, though, as far as raising the money, and it's $85 per student. And I would have to raise that, see what I can do as far as ideas, but I think it's doable. So with that, are there any questions that the Board would have? Or is there anything Steve would want to add to?
Did you want to, other groups that have been there recently?
Yeah, yeah, so they, a lot of schools will go there for their day trips. Rhinelander, I know Sugar Camp has gone there, Eagle River. Besmer, Clintonville, and Niagara are ones that she mentioned do the overnight. Niagara does a whole week, their sixth grade. And so that assured me, they, you know, done this before. They have a lot of winter retreats, like weekend, just groups that come in. But as far as schools, that's some schools. Also, I did, I have contacted Eagle River. They go to a place called Conserve up in Linda Lakes, and their fourth grade goes there overnight. And I talked to Nicole, who runs that, and just got some ideas from her the other day as far as what works. She talked about a parent meeting, how you want to just assure that everything's in place, any concerns. And that backtracks to Maria, who I talked to yesterday. Said she's even willing to come to Three Lakes if this passes during a parent meeting, having a PowerPoint, just making sure everyone feels comfortable with what they're getting into, so, yeah.
I would just like to say thanks for finding a new way for kids to reach out and learn, you know, learn in new ways. I mean, it's great to keep their minds out of their routine and give them a different opportunity, so I think it's a great idea.
This might be the only top opportunity for some of our students to go to a camp overnight, especially.
I agree. Excellent. We did it when I was in school, the truth tomorrow, and it was wonderful. I still remember it, so.
Any questions?
No, I completely support it. I want Jeff to steal, borrow ideas for future development within the district because I see this really fitting into our plans for future outdoor education development. And, you know, the future's not that far away, so. Thank you, Jeff, for taking this initial step.
I appreciate the support and the trust. Thank you.
You bet.
If there's not any other questions, anyone willing to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the overnight field trip request as presented. Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Stacy, second by Michelle. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unheard, motion carries. Thank you again for putting that together.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
You ready, sir?
Yes.
Okay, next we move on to Nexus. School Perceptions, Facilities Planning Survey Review.
I'm going to move so you guys can see better.
Here we go. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Great, well, thanks for having me back again. So my goal tonight is to share the results of your community's survey. I'm going to share my screen with a little bit of luck. Can you see that?
Yes.
All right. So we're going to go through the report tonight. There's some background information, or the information that was contained in the survey itself is also included in the report. That's important because it creates context for the response. We're going to look at the demographics and then slice and dice the data to help you make sense of it. So again, School Perceptions, we've been around for more than 20 years now. We've done over 3 million staff, parent, and student surveys for the sake of school improvement, and now we've done over 1,000 community surveys like the one we did for Three Lakes to kind of help the Board decide what to do in terms of your referendum planning. Your survey had a deadline of November 4th. We had 643 responses, which gave us a response rate of 16%. And from a statistical standpoint, we're at just under plus or minus 4%. A very good response rate, we've got good data. Our goal's to kind of hit over 400. Once you hit over 400, the data doesn't change much at all. So we took our survey, a lot of older folks. So we had 44% that were 65 and older, and then a little bump down at 35 to 44 age group. I actually went back and looked at the 2020 Census, and 2020 Census has you at 43% of the Three Lakes community that are 65 and older. So we're spot on with that, and that's good because when it comes to taking surveys as well as voting, our seniors tend to turn out to vote, so this is good. We had one question, is your primary residence in the district? 88% of our sample said yes, with 11% that said no. 1% didn't know where they live. No judgment, we don't know who they are. But this is important because it's a beautiful area, the Three Lakes area, and some folks have a second home on a lake, potentially. They may have gotten the survey, they may have taken the survey, but they don't get to vote on the referendum, so we remove any non-residents from the funding support question. So that's why that question is there. We did have representation from all the municipalities. Roughly two-thirds from the Town of Three Lakes and about a third from the Town of Sugar Camp, and we did have actually representation from everybody else, all the way down to the Town of Stella, which might be one or two people. 12% of our sample were employees of the district. 29% were parents. And we had one question on communication, how do you like to receive information? I hear we took the staff out completely because we've got our own internal modes of communication with staff. We then broke it into two subgroups. The light blue are parents. Their number one, far and away, is send me an email, and then two-thirds will read the newsletter. Then it drops down to, I'm going to go to the website, about half, and almost half will go on Facebook and get information that way. For our non-parent, non-staff, we call them the purple people. So that's about roughly three-quarters of your community. They want a newsletter. But almost half will read the Vilas County Review, and then about a third will go to the website. Again, the information that was in the survey is also in the reports. So we talked about the various projects that were under consideration. The total 25.2 million, potentially. And then we created a prioritization. I guess we're Green Bay Packers tonight, green and gold. So if everybody would have said we're doing, or if it's a high priority, it'd be green. If it's a low priority, it's a light yellow. So it's, if you do the math, simple average, we can get up to a, no higher than a three, no lower than a one. We then sorted your projects from the highest priority to the lowest priority. So the number one was mechanical and electrical, even though that was the most expensive. I think people get it. They say that's important, I'll support that. Safety and security was second. Building exterior and site was third, followed by the classroom and support areas and building interior. We did have a few other items, four other items that we tested, including the, either a dedicated cafeteria or a dedicated gym at Sugar Camp. Could be either one. That was a 1.87, and it kind of dropped down in the three athletic projects, including outdoor athletics, fitness center, and artificial turf. They tested in the really bottom third of the items tested. We needed some direction on the Sugar Camp decision. Should we build a dedicated cafeteria or a dedicated gym? So we asked the question, if the community prioritizes one of those, which option should the district pursue? And it's always nice when the groups kind of agree. So we broke it into staff being dark blue, parents being light blue, and the non-parent, non-staff, the purple people, they're purple. And they came up pretty darn similar. So all three groups, about two-thirds broke doing the cafeteria versus a dedicated gym. And the dedicated gym did cost more, so that's also a factor that influenced response, but I think we've got clear direction there. Probably the most important question on the survey was funding support. We tested everything from a $25.2 million referendum down to a smaller, less than 10 million. So the logic of this kind of starts out, we take a look at the top row. 24% of our non-parent, non-staff, almost a quarter would support 25 million. Well, that's great, but that's not 50%, so we have to keep adding on. The assumption is that a person that would support 25.2 would likely also support 20, so we added that on. And then if those two groups likely probably also support 15 million. So we, we keep adding it till we cross the 50% threshold. And then we get all the way down to the far right side where folks said no referendum, not going to support anything. Rob and I do a lot of these projects together, and we know based on experience that that bright red group can, in some districts, go up to 30, 35%. In Three Lakes, it's very low. So only 10% of non-parent, non-staff, 12% of parents, and it looks like 2% of your staff say I'm not going to support anything. So that's really good news. So we broke that question into the non-parent, non-staff being the top row, parents being the second, and the staff being the third. Now, just to pause for a second. When you think about your community, you need to understand that the vast majority of your folks fall into that non-parent, non-staff group. So yeah, you hear from your staff, they're there every day. Parents are very vocal. It's that non-parent, non-staff who neither work in the district nor have kids in the district. They represent the majority of your voters, so as a school board, you have to put more weighting on that group. So we did that for you. And we assume, for the sake of this analysis, that about 75% of your community fall into that non-parent, non-staff, purple group. And about 25% of your remaining group fall into that parent group. And for the sake of this analysis, we took the staff out completely. We said they're less than 1%, and they just don't get a lot of votes, so they're not going to move the needle. We then did a weighted average analysis. At the three levels, at the 25.2 million, if that were to be put on the ballot, we would predict that you'd end up at about 26.3%. If a $20 million question were put on the ballot, you're getting close, but you're still under that 50% threshold. And when you drop down to 15 million, there you're north of 60%. And this is not including any undecided, excuse me, votes or survey takers that were factored in that. So that's kind of how that fell out. We did have a couple overall satisfaction questions, and these are really important because overall satisfaction highly correlates with referendum support. If someone has a bee in their bonnet and aren't happy with something that the district gets done, they're not likely to support the district when it comes to any sort of referendum. So this particular analysis, people could say, we're doing great, we're doing good, we're doing fair, we're doing poor. If everybody said we're doing great, we'd be a four. If everyone said we're doing poor, we'd be a one. So you can see the numbers are all, for the most part, greater than three. We've got a couple that drop down. But this is hard to put this into context. So our software actually goes out and compares you to similar school districts. And so the group average, you can see the 3.3, 3.12, 3.06, and 3.24. Our software goes out and compares you to districts and then places you into a percentile. If you're in the first percentile, that's bad. If you're in the 98th percentile, that's good. So you actually turned out in the, really north of 80% on all four of these items tested in terms of delivering a high-quality education, keeping the public informed, managing funds appropriately, and building pride in the community. That's really great. So way to go, Administration and Board on that. And we had one overall question. On a scale of 0 to 10, how likely would you be to recommend the district to a friend or family member? Again, similar results. You scored a 7.81, your comparison was a 7.18, which puts you in the 78th percentile there. So, we did a survey, what did we learn? We learned that the Three Lakes School District scored in the top quartile or top 25% for all section metrics tested. And then the next question is, well, we've got a potential April referendum coming up. Should we even consider such a thing? We'd have to get a resolution approved in early, or actually, late January. And the answer is yes. Clearly, folks think you're doing a good job and can see the need, so you should consider taking a question or two questions to the voters in April. And then it comes down to money. A referendum of 15 million or more, but less than 20, would likely have support, and this is pretty important, assuming that projects included are acceptable to the voters. So again, we've got one criteria, which is, what is it we're going to do? Second criteria is, how much is it going to cost me? And if you can have those two lines crossed, you'll likely have support. And one of the things we talked about, actually last week with your committee, was the possibility of having a second question on the ballot. So in Wisconsin, every school district is allowed to put two questions to vote each calendar year. Next year, 2025, there is no fall election. So there's not a gubernatorial, there's not a presidential. There's not going to be any voting going on. So you can't go out to any kind of referendum in the fall. Your only chance is going to be in the spring. So you could consider two questions on the ballot. I know that's something that was kicked around last week. And what that could look like is there is the have-to-have project, and then there's the like-to-have project, potentially. And then we let the voters decide if the like-to-have project is a good thing to do at this time, or it's just not, we're not there, we can't afford it, or it's not a good plan. So that's something that the Board could consider tonight is consideration for a second question. So I think that is your results. I'll pause and answer questions.
Any questions, any surprises?
Pretty straightforward. Perfect.
Perfect.
Well, I think we're good, Bill.
You're good? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good night.
You, too.
I didn't know that there was going to be a technical aspect. So I'm Brian Fritz. I am a graduate of Three Lakes 1995 class. Went away to college, moved away, swore I was never, ever going to come back. And as many of us here in this room, the draw to back to the district, back home, was very strong. And actually, extremely happy that I came back. I'm currently a commercial banker at Ford Bank in Three Lakes, and I've been banking for 20 years, mostly serving the Northwoods community. I'm a member of the task force and also a proud parent of a sixth grader here at Sugar Camp School, which we kind of open enrolled, I suppose, because we're actually Three Lakes residents, but I've been in love with the Sugar Camp district, so our daughter Zoe was here. was here.
My name is George Polcaster. I've been here for 10 years. I have three kids that went through Three Lakes and graduated, are in college now, and one that's still in the district as a junior in high school. And love the community, really feel like it's part of us and part of our family. And so it was a privilege to be part of the task force and just to learn more. And it's a even greater privilege to represent those that were part of it, to help communicate and summarize some of the stuff that we talked about.
I'm Jess Edwards-Sun. I'm another proud parent of some Sugar Campers, three in Sugar, or two in Sugar Camp, one in Three Lakes right now. And I am also the president of the SEO and a task force member. So, thank you.
A coach, parent of three kids over at Three Lakes. I coach and teach in Three Lakes. And so it was a privilege to help serve with the other task force members and figure out what we are interested in passing on to you guys as a recommendation.
So I think it's kind of important, I'm not going to just read off the slide, but I think it's kind of important to just say why we're here, why the task force was created in the first place. And really, the last time our district passed a major capital referendum was February of 1992, 32 years ago. To help illustrate how long that was, the number one song in the nation, probably the board member, Mr. Ellis, was singing it, "I'm Too Sexy." Wisconsin Badger fans have yet to jump around as that song hadn't come out, or will not come out for another three months. Country fans were tuning into Garth Brooks, "What She's Doing Now." The referendum totaled $8 million and supported a district of 667 total students at that time. Its primary goal was to modernize aging facilities and bring classrooms up to DPI standards. The facilities it addressed were based on a plan from 1977, obviously 15 years old at that point. It added 110,000 square feet, and to kind of put that in comparison, that's 2.5 acres, two football fields, almost two white houses. So a lot of square footage was added to both facilities at that time. You know, coming, obviously 1992, as we said 32 years ago, but looking forward for today, our current situation reflects decades of evolving needs, challenges, and opportunities. Facilities that were modernized with the $8 million investment in 1992 are now showing significant wear and tear. The previous administration did their best to maintain these systems, but many mechanical components have long surpassed their life expectancy. Oval gum and Band-Aid are no longer enough to keep the things running. Additionally, our student population, community expectations, and educational requirements have evolved significantly since that time. We want to commend our current administration and maintenance professionals for their tireless efforts to maintain these facilities despite aging the infrastructure and limited resources and budget. The district has not been idle. Many updates have been accomplished through the operational budgets, including installing key card access points for security reasons, creating community workout room to serve both students and residents, and replacing flooring in Sugar Camp and Three Lakes very recently. These projects reflect the district's dedication to making improvements where possible. However, these smaller-scale efforts cannot address the larger systemic challenges facing our facilities. Looking ahead, it's clear that we need a comprehensive plan to tackle these underlying issues and ensure our schools are prepared to meet the needs of students and community for decades to come. And now the time to really come together as a district and community to evaluate our commitment. Hence, the communication with NEXUS for going on two and a half years, and really a meticulous effort to go through all of our facilities with a fine-tooth comb and find, identify areas of opportunity, areas of need, and maybe some areas of want that really would be presented to the community as a task force. What did the task force do? Well, the task force, we got together over six hours, maybe a little bit more, and we toured both the facilities in Three Lakes and in Sugar Camp, really personalized some of the needs and saw some of the necessities for some of these improvements, and really some of the best efforts to try to keep and limp things along. But just really realize that at some point, there is a breaking point, we have to either fish or cut bait. We obviously saw and took a lot of input in the form of surveys, teacher interaction, staff interaction. And I think that we really came together and represented the community. I think that we did a quick, like, hand poll, where's that, where everybody was from? And I think Sugar Camp was just slightly underrepresented, but I think there's three members in Sugar Camp of the 20-person group, but overall, we had a pretty good representation. And I think the Sugar Camp members did well for themselves. So again, the brings us today, and we're here to just make a recommendation to you, and hopefully, all the work that went into it, we feel that it's obvious.
Thank you, Brian. So this is going to be a little bit of a repeat. Bill went over these next two slides, so I'll, but it's good to linger on this because it's kind of the meat and potatoes of everything. I mean, this is where the survey results are what really drive the priorities, and they also reveal the project support. That's what happens when you look at these slides, so it's worth dwelling on. One important note is, like, the facilities are in great shape. These are really well cared for, there's been a lot of attention given to it, new roads in Three Lakes School, all the flooring that happened. So it's really not about, hey, have things gone into disrepair? It's a matter of, you can't lean on just your operational budget to handle some of the big expensive stuff that needs to happen. So that's where this comes about. And so I think the facility staff would agree with these assessments and numbers and things like that, and the priorities. So I think what you're finding is a lot of overlap between the community support, what the survey results kind of demonstrate, and all the work that went into compiling the information. Like Bill said, you know, you're not going to have a three, you're not going to have a one. So what you're really keying in on is that weighted average to the far right that demonstrate this is what needs attention and has the full support in terms of projects, so mechanical and electrical, in terms of stuff that you don't see. It's more than just changing a, you know, a toilet here or there, but this is like the big stuff that needs a lot of work. And all these numbers are not fixed, these are things that they need more attention. It's just trying to rough it out so that we have some sense of what potential costs could be. So you can kind of see, as you work through there, this is the stuff that would really inform question one, and then the next slide would be the stuff that is still important. So we're still, I think, in the category of needs, not wants, but this helps position us and helps us understand what's a priority for the district and for the people that live here. I think an important point would just be that the future is now. So if you wait, everything gets harder, more difficult, more expensive. So if you have a really good sense of what needs to happen, and you put something in motion and have the funding and support, these things can actually take effect. And a thought that I had, that I shared with the task force, was just that how, you know, the school supports the community and the community supports the school. There's a back and forth here. And so if the community can understand that this is something that serves them as they fund it, I think you could have real support and traction and go from there. That's all I'm going to say on that.
We went over a couple different financing options without jeopardizing our operational referendum that I believe is up in another five years. We took that into consideration a lot because we cannot jeopardize that. So we don't really have any other funding in place, so we have to go for the capital And yeah, that's pretty much our only option. All you need.
All right. So I mean, most of what I can say, I think dealers have said, but as we look at this, as George said, you know, the longer we wait, the more expensive things are going to get. I don't remember if it was you, or maybe it was Bill, who was talking about another school district who went to referendum but didn't pass, and a few years later, they went back to do essentially the same thing, and everything had basically doubled in cost. So waiting doesn't pay off when you're talking about facility needs and things like that. So we had a lot of discussion in our task force meetings, stuff about survey, would results have been a little bit different, had things been a little more granular, if you looked at, you know, if you looked at just the athletics, you know, what would the track itself redoing that cost versus just the soccer, football fields, and things like that? If we've been able to break things down, but at the same time, it's a survey, you look for brevity, otherwise you lose people completing it and getting that back. So I think there might have been a few small changes here or there, but overall, we felt like it was a pretty good response of what community is willing to support, what the priorities are. We had other conversations about, you know, whether the task force should have maybe gotten involved a little earlier, maybe some other meetings, stuff like that. But we thought, overall, pretty good process, and a lot of questions that came up involving all the different projects that we're looking at here. So I think we got one more. Yeah, so here would be our recommendation as a task force group to the board is look at things that are really critical and go to referendum and ask a question on that. It would be somewhere in that 18-plus million dollar range most likely to hit all of those different projects. And then, and that should have, based on the feedback we got, should have a high chance of passing. And then there are some other things that perhaps are not quite as high of a priority, or perhaps didn't have quite as much community support, but we would still be interested in pursuing, and that would be a second question. Keeping in mind, neither of these questions rely on the other question, passing, they are totally separate questions. But the second question would be looking at those other projects, things like resurfacing the track, redoing football and soccer fields, maybe adding irrigation there, perhaps putting bathrooms out there, perhaps adding a parking lot off of Gremlin Road, bring things back into ADA compliance and all of that. So that would be a much smaller number, and we would just have to do a really good job of communicating with the community what the needs are and why we're doing some of these things. As a task force group, we had a pretty good idea of why some of these projects were brought up, that perhaps weren't conveyed in the survey, just because, you know, you're looking for brevity there. But if people really understood what the needs were, maybe they would have been more supportive of some of the projects that had a little less support. Well, we also think, you know, again, we kind of mentioned it in the previous slide about the frequency of capital referendums. I mean, 32 years is just, I mean, that's on the ridiculous side, right? So hopefully, as we kind of come together maybe more regularly, 10 to 15 years is a better window to do some of these things. And Terry's already mentioned things about, you know, doing different things possibly with funds and operational budgets to kind of help augment some of the excessive needs, maybe? But there's just so much need. The original survey, or the original, I would guess, not survey, but the original plan uncovered $45 million worth of potential needs within the two facilities. Obviously, we're nowhere near that, but I mean, I think we hit the major things, and I think we make it better for employees, students, to come to school every single day, and maybe do, you know, match exceeds expectations in the classroom with some visual aids as you walk into the building that we're proud of, not only our buildings, but obviously the academic performance of the students.
One quick thing, I think Rob and Terry did a great job of really leading from behind, like facilitating the whole process, getting everybody to speak and allow all the information to kind of percolate up from the task force and put it all out there. So I thought it was a really well-run process to just help everybody get informed and feel that buy-in, and hopefully, there's a little bit of an organic process to this, extends out, and people can kind of see and own it, so it feels like there's high ownership from everybody that is in the community. But I think that would be just one last quick thing I'd say.
Any parting thoughts, Terry?
Well, I want to thank the representative group for doing this above and beyond and being part of the community task force. Kelly was part of that as well, which is Patrick in the back, who joined us as well, but in this community. There was a lot of really rich discussion, and I always say the answers are in the room. And I think that we came away with a couple of points that we're going to hold on to. We're not going to necessarily let this go in the task force just as a, we want to keep this vibe going, if you will, and have that engagement. So when we're talking about something else down the road, maybe it's five years, maybe it's 10 years, you know, whatever it may be, there's already that connection with the team and also with our community. And that's, I think, a big learning that I had, that we're going to make sure we have this. And the other thing is how overwhelmingly supportive our public is when they understand the reasons behind what we're doing and why we're doing them. I think there's a real trust, which we never want to shake that trust, in why we do what we do, and we want to remain being extremely fiscally responsible. But I appreciate what Brian said, because we're doing it with the program, we're doing it with everything we need to do, but there's a lot to be said for school pride and facilities and feeling great when you walk in to your surrounding environment. And I think we have to seize that because it is who we are. So thank you, group. I want to applaud you for everything you did for us. We spent a lot of hours, we did a diet, snap diets, but I think it was worth it. Rob, did you want to sum anything up?
Yeah, and thanks to everybody for participating in that rich conversation that we had. From a next steps perspective, at your December meeting, it would be wonderful to have an in-depth conversation with the board to see what your thoughts are, ultimately determine, do you support the recommendation of the task force? Are there some tweaks? Do you not? Answer any questions you had at that time. Perhaps it might make sense to have a special meeting in between now and when that regular meeting is, just to make sure that we go through as much or as little detail as you want, so that ultimately, when you have that meeting in December, you're comfortable with whatever the result is. If you decide to go to referendum, the resolution will be passed at your January board meeting for an April election. So if I missed anything?
I don't think so.
Any questions, board members or task force members of the process? Any, we'll have plenty of time to talk through this, but with the folks here, if you have any questions left to ask.
No, just a thank you for the presentation. It was great. Appreciate all of you talking through it, especially your respective priorities.
Yeah, and thank you again for the time. I mean, it's not easy, everybody's busy. Thank you guys for doing what you guys did. Ironically, what's interesting, a referendum, an $8 million referendum in '92 is 18 million today. So it is almost right on, you know, just based on inflation.
Just to add 110,000 square feet, Bill had, or Rob had some numbers, but you couldn't even touch that.
No.
Okay, up next is our library fire, and I might need, am I right? So are we switching all that to the other?
Uh, okay.
Okay. Technical break, let's do something else. I'm sorry. So I'm wondering why we don't have any. So, I'm checking to see if there's any.
Nikki and I are going to be chatting with the faculty and teacher.
She's switching the house.
Oh, I see.
Change it, that's right.
We got to do it.
Sorry.
Go back in.
Thank you so much.
Excellent.
See you guys. I come over.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you so much. Excellent. Yeah.
See you guys.
I come over.
Okay.
Yes.
Next, we have just the section.
All right, good.
Okay.
No, I'll send this in, but if you have a question, you're right.
I love them.
I love them.
I love them.
I love them.
Thank you so much.
Excellent.
Yeah.
I know we are possible to do.
See you guys.
I come over.
Okay.
Uh, yes.
Next, we have just the section.
All right, good.
Right here?
Okay.
No, I'll send this in, but if you have a question, you're right.
I love them.
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 Yeah.
I have them.
I have them.
Much better.
Of course, I'm going to.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, then, we're going to continue with the library plan. Like I said, if anybody feels that they want to leave, that's absolutely fine. The Three Lakes School District Library Plan is something that we are required to have. In the last few years, we have not had LMS, an active library media specialist on staff. Ally Pachowski was our specialist, and she left us, and Katie Botnick was training to take over, and she has since changed her direction and path. She's not interested in doing that, she's doing something else with further studies. So, that does not mean that we don't still have the need, and it was time to be updated. And actually, I wanted, our goal was, Nikki and I, to have this done for December tenth, which is when DPI does their snapshot of our district. And so what we're going to look at tonight is the new library plan, and I'm going to go through it quickly with you with the understanding that we're seeking approval tonight, but this is going to be a continuing work in progress. It's a three-year plan that will be continually updated. So why do we need one? It's a legislative requirement. The alignment of the library program with the district priorities is the logic, and as you'll notice, if you know our plan, our long-range plan, it falls right in line with what we're doing. And it is the best practice, that is the inspiration for this document. Now, there's a lot of words here, but I'm going to go ahead and share with you the reason why. We were able to contract with Beth Martin, who is a library media specialist. We were, she was found and located by CISA nine because I was really kind of pulling my hair out, not knowing where to go. Most of the librarians that I've known have retired in the last two to three years, and they're enjoying retirement, really didn't want another project, so that made it a little difficult. And then trying to find somebody with, in another district to team up with, they're in the same boat, too. But Beth was a library media specialist with DC Everest, and she was there, as it says, for thirty-six years. She is a wealth of knowledge. So she has come up, she's spent time with us, she's with our library paras, spent quite a bit of time going through our libraries, looking at where we are at, helping us identify our goals, and really getting us going with where we want to go. And we took our long-range plan, we took our ideas and how we can support the curriculum and programming, and that's where this came from. This is also the plan that we'll be submitting to DPI, so that's why you see a lot of the extra wordiness here, because this goes to DPI and they will read it as they check off their portions of what we need to complete. And here is our staff. Rich Martin is new to us. He had only been with us for, I think he was on his, start of his third week when he met Beth, so he was very new and had a lot of great questions. Megan Reimbrand, she's also new to us this year. She's in the Three Lakes Elementary Library. And then we have Keisha Hoager, who is a star. She has got years and years, twenty years in the district, many years in the library, and she knows the ins and outs, and we are really relying on her, and she has been fantastic with helping bring the new people up to speed as well. So, we decided that out of all the potential goals we could have, we're focusing on two. It's not a good idea to get too spread out and too thin, especially when you're starting something a little more in-depth. So, the library para professionals, under the guidance of the licensed library media specialist, will develop a balanced current collection of print materials that support the curriculum of the Three Lakes School District. So that's our number-one goal. Did you forget something?
I did, sorry.
Okay, no, that's fine. So that's what we're focusing in on first, and this is how we're going to do it. We already developed the plan, now we're going to start implementing. So beginning in January, the library paras, working with Beth, because she didn't just develop a plan with us, she's going to help us implement and really get it going. We're going to focus on our current collection of print materials that support the curriculum of our district, and this is going to be completed by 2027. It's not done, then you just continue with the cycle. Right now, we're looking at average age of the collection to be updated by five years. There will be a thirty percent increase in the number of award-winning books contained in the collection, and hopefully, a fifty percent increase in the ability to fulfill the patron requests, and then finally, a twenty percent average per pupil increase in the number of circulations for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year in comparison to this school year. And this is something that I've always questioned. I think that we have some really good materials and resources, but I don't think they're necessarily balanced. I'm always going, where's the hunting books? Where's the stuff that might really pull boys in, you know, nature, or, and I shouldn't say just boys, boys or girls, the Northwoods field? We've got a lot in certain genres, but we need more. So that's going to be a very close focus for us. To achieve the goal, we are evaluating our current collection. We're going to review and revise our policies. This is especially important to us. Our policies are very, very old. They predate much of the activity that has been focused on libraries and such over the last, probably easily the last three to five years specifically. It is always in the district's best interest to have policy in place that is updating current, whether or not we have a book challenge, whether we not, we have concerns. Our policies are not where they want. Now, as the board knows, I'm doing a lot of work right now with Nikki and with Scott Mickish, our attorney, on policy work, and so you'll see the library policies among the first to come forward. We're hoping to have those in front of you, if not in January, by February, just to have that in place. We're going to continue to develop more collaboration with teachers. Our vision is, if a teacher, Erin Marvin, says, "I really need this," instead of it just having to be her relying on pulling it, that we can get that to her and save some time. Consult with reputable, reputable, real sources. And then our common school funds are something that we're looking very closely at. Beth, what I like about her and her experience is she's a little bit of an edgy risk taker, and she's had the conversation with Caleb and I that things are buying through technology because it is technology. Technically, will be approved and cross over into common school funds. So why not do some shifting in your funds and open up some more technology monies? So we're looking very closely at that. And then our second goal is really investing in our para professional staff. Since we don't have a dedicated LMS at this point, it does fall on our para professionals. Like I said, they're knowledgeable, they're willing, and we're going to put the time and the energy into having them where they need to be because they're going to be with us for a while. And we're going to do this again, beginning in January with Beth's support. We're going to explore and implement staff development opportunities for them. You can read the rest of those. Looking again at a three-year cycle, we're going to make sure we have some funds allocated towards their professional development opportunities, whether that is just some release time to do some studying. There is a conference that is mentioned later on within the board docs that I have shared with you, the Weymouth Conference. And then I also want to start really getting a good feel with what we have in our library and informational technology or media tied more into our technology components, because they will go hand in hand very nicely. And here are some steps to achieve that goal. I kind of rattled through them. Beth is really, I'm going to say, she's taken a real liking to us. We just all hit it off really well. She's going to carry us through this year, and I believe she will be more than willing to support us next year in that capacity while we're trying to invest in finding someone, whether internally or externally, to take on that role as our LMS. And here's a timeline for you. We just broke it down by six-month periods. Again, looking at utilizing our Destiny Library Manager training. Keisha's very skilled in this. Megan has quite a bit of knowledge, and Rich is picking it up quickly. So, we like them regularly. We've already got plans for that in place. Then the second part of that plan would be to continue to work directly with Caleb, allocating funds. We want to be really purposeful in what we're selecting materials. Of course, they're recommended by, you know, very reputable resources that, we just don't go pick books out. We are guided by a lot of standards through the state and through the standards of the library media. But we also want to be wise with those funds, and we want to spend every dollar, because that is one of the benefits of living in Wisconsin, that we get that common school funds, which come from the school forest, or the forest harvesting within our state. That's what supports it. It's really unique to us. And then looking into the next years, continue to create the target book lists, continuing allocating the funds that, for our collection development. We are going to move to purchasing books that are already, it's called Mark, they're already processed. So instead of, remember the old librarian days when they put the sticker on, they, the old day with the cards, you glue that in, and then you break the bindings down, and you do all that stuff? Well, we have para professionals, and we are utilizing them as special ed para roles, too. And it's not much, more virtually pennies that adds to the cost to have these things processed. So we're trying to work smarter, not harder, and that's a big shift. I know Keisha's really comfortable with it, and she didn't see it as big of a need, but I see it as a time drainer, that we can use time more valuably. And then finishing up, we look at December thirty-first as when we would go forward and revisit the goals. Areas of future growth, continue our attempts to get the LMS, exploring our opportunities with the public library staff. We have a really good relationship with Demer. I feel that their new leadership has been very receptive toward the district, and I see that continue to grow. Just as a reminder, we have the four K story hour community program with them, and always want to keep doing additional activities to let that go farther, especially for our older kids, too, before and after-school opportunities we're talking about at this point. And then at the bottom, they're explore opportunities to support the district's one-to-one tech And the next steps were, number one, we needed to get this in front of the board so you could see the work that's been going on. I know I'm rattling through it because we have a very busy agenda, but this was a really super-heavy lift. Even though it got done rather quickly now when it came together, we've been, you know, since last December, January, we've been really focusing on what we had to do, how we were going to do it, what we needed to do, and came to the conclusion, we didn't want to just jump through the hoops and mark the boxes that say, yes, we have complied. We wanted a really super-solid product that we can work forward from. And I think that's why it's become such quality work already, and Beth has been a big part of that. We're going to do a regular update then annually on where this is at. I would say probably every year in the summer board meeting time after the school year is done, but before the next school year begins, like the Jan, or the July or August time, bring a report to the school board and saying, this is what was, how our collection was used, this is what we learned, this is what we focused on, these are the policies that we brought forward and updated. Looking forward, this is where we're going to shift to for the following year. And boy, I said a lot of words really fast, but I wanted you to get a feel for it, and this is a very important project that we have, you know, now we have a basis to be working from and get into place. And with that, I open it up to questions that you may have? Any concerns or... This is one that has been a big undertaking, but I didn't keep talking in your ear like I did about the nondiscrimination over and over and over. You heard about that a lot. This was one that had to be done, but, you know, with specificity of the library media specialist and then really diving into the work. So I'm very pleased with the product, where we're at. It's much more than I even hoped to start with, and I did a lot of looking out there. So with that, if you don't have other questions, I'd ask the board to consider approving this library plan tonight so we can get it in motion and keep working from it. And thank you.
I guess my only concern is just making sure that our policies reflect where we want to be.
Absolutely.
That's going to be, I think, the biggest step on this.
It is. And that's a good point, Josh, and that's why it's important that we have this plan in place, because our policies are being, you know, written and worked on with us through our Policy Resource Guide, WASB, and so they have the most legal language for us, and then we want to have the procedural that we work on, should there be a book challenge or anything that would come up. We also want to have policy that's written specific to Three Lakes, because what I don't want to see open, I don't want to open the door to what, if you follow much going on in the state, people who do not belong to districts, like a neighboring district, could come to your school board meeting and start challenging your books. And we want our policies to be administered and held for the people of our Three Lakes School District community, not because there's a group that's coming up from southern Wisconsin and want to make a point. So our policies are going to be written through that lines.
Now, with adding this many books, I mean, it's going to be adding a lot of books in a hurry. Is this still something that you will be overseeing, being that we don't have a true LMS?
Yeah. I felt I had to after, you know, the last couple of years when there started to be some questions. And even with having an LMS in the past, I just think, even though I've learned a lot, I don't have the knowledge and the skill that they do, but I feel I need to be aware of what's coming in and going through the libraries, because ultimately, I'm the one who has to answer to our community what is okay and why we have it. And the goal here is to have a real diverse collection, and it might not be for everybody, but it might need to be for somebody, you know, and you can get accessibility to that. Also, in a school library, it's very straightforward in what the recommendations are that we should have available for our students, and there are some things that we probably want to be able to give kids access to, but we don't want them within our building. With our partnership with Demer Library, that is a matter of a phone call and not even a half a block walk. So we have that availability to support our kids, whatever their needs might be, and get that to them.
When is the submission requirement for DPI?
December tenth.
The other question, is there any grants revenue source that's provided by DPI specific to the new requirement?
Nothing other than our common school funds for purchasing, no. Caleb?
I just want to add to Josh's question about the books coming in.
Yeah.
Before any of our people submit orders, they come to me and I look through every single title as well. So there's a few eyes on it to make sure that we've got appropriate. So, there's a few eyes on it to make sure that we've got appropriate books coming through, and they've all got the ratings next to them and making sure that they're appropriate.
Thank you, Caleb. That's a great point, yeah. And technically, in full disclosure, even though there is a date for, of December 10th for the snapshot, DPI has already given us back in August confirmation that if we didn't have our plan ready, that they weren't going to, you know, I don't want to say come after us, but since it's ready, I'd like to have it officially in the works that we could keep working off of it and update it.
Any other questions for Terry? If anyone is ready, we could consider a motion?
I'm going to motion to approve the Three Lakes School District Library Plan as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Stacy, second by Michelle. All those in favor of the motion, signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. None heard, motion carries. Thank you, Terry, for all the work.
Thank you for your support. Yep, we're very excited about getting that going.
This is almost my favorite agenda item. Consider appointment of the WASB delegate and alternate for the Delegate Assembly at the 2025 State Education Convention. Before we sit in awkward silence, I did the delegate last year. I am happy to do that again if someone would consider the nomination. Is there anyone else interested who would like to serve that role? Okay, thank you. I will take a nomination when anyone is ready.
I'll nominate Alicia as our WASB delegate, Delegate Assembly for 2025 State Education Convention.
I'll second.
I will accept the nomination. Anyone else interested? So, we have a motion by Josh, second by Mitch. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now we'll look to nominations for an alternate delegate.
I don't know that I will be there this year, so I don't want to put it in the far position.
And you have to be available for Tuesday, right? Yeah.
For the Tuesday night.
So...
Well, that's not mandatory. Tuesday night is...
Well, it says it's something, it's encouraged, though.
So, I think this was language that was passed over from another agenda.
Could be.
Because I attended that meeting, and I'm very confident that a lack of attendance in that meeting would not put you at disadvantage for the assembly.
I did not go two years ago to Tuesday, and I didn't feel like I missed anything.
I did go. They do provide a little bit of information, but everything that comes in the delegate packet is...
Was complete?
Yes, explains everything that is required in the assembly.
Well, knowing that, that's a good piece of information to have.
I will nominate Stacy Klein to be the alternate delegate for Three Lakes School.
Second.
That took a while.
I just forgot I was supposed to do that.
Okay. Any other nominations? Okay, we have a nomination on the floor for Stacy to be the alternate delegate for Three Lakes. We'll go to vote. All those in favor of the motion, by myself, second by Michelle, signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None heard. Congratulations, Stacy. Okay, and next we move to consider renewal of the Girls Hockey Cooperative with Northland Pines.
What should we approve tonight is a co-op renewal with Northland Pines for the 25, 26, and 26, 27 hockey season for girls hockey. Northland Pines remains the host school, and obviously we have a system that each of us that go into is co-op. There's an activity fee of $30. That's Pines's policy because they are the host school, all the schools involved do the same thing there. If you turn to the second page, you'll see there's a conglomerate of teams that make up this co-op, and they're proposing to also add Doorway Michigan to this consortium. It seems a lot of the Northwoods that the girls hockey programs, the numbers have gone down considerably. I know my daughter played for Lakeland five years ago, and they had their own standalone team, so the Pines, these schools that are listed on here, even Rhine Lander's involved. So, this conglomerate provides lots of area school participants to have a hockey program to compete in. If you look at the Three Lakes portion, it's all alphabetical, you'll see we don't have any participants this year, but we will have one next year. She's an eighth-grade student, and she's chomping at the bit to play over at Pines. So, by renewing this co-op, you give her any additional kid that decided to go out for hockey that opportunity. And it is a, like I said, it is a renewal, it's not something new. So, I just wanted you to see a little bit of that information. So, if you have questions, you can ask.
Anything brought forward by Pines, or has it been going pretty good, going well?
It seems like it's going well. Like I said, it's just really odd for me to see all these teams in this.
It's a lot.
You know, it's like five years ago, it was not like this at all.
Are they ever going to fill into a varsity and JV?
I don't believe that they have a JV at this time. If you look at the participant numbers, you're right on the cusp there. I mean, Pines has 10 kids, and then most schools have one or two, I think Rhine Lander has six, so, you know, it's right on that cusp. I don't believe that they have a JV schedule at this time, but it's possible, depending if all those kids will obviously help.
Because littles, I think it's 14.
Because hockey is such a sport of such, you know, physical exertion, it's really hard to field two teams because, you know, those lines come in and out of there very often, and, you know, you need those numbers to make a team, so. I haven't heard that they're running a JV.
Any other questions for Phil? Anyone willing to make a motion?
I will make a motion to approve the Girls Hockey Cooperative with Northland Pines.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mitch, second by Stacy. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
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 Opposed? None heard, motion carries. Thank you, Phil. Next, we move on to Parent Teacher Conference Report.
We'll have our principals report out on the participation, and Mr. Zuse, if you're ready, can we have you start?
For sure. The parent teacher conferences attendance data from our, the high school neck of the woods. Teachers had, a third of our folks saw between six and 15 visitors for the evening. 20% of our folks saw 16 to 25. 40% saw five or less, and then a couple saw 26 to 35 visitors, which is pretty heavy traffic, and those tended to be some of the new faces, people want to meet new teachers, which is awesome. In comparison to recent parent teacher conferences, 60% of our staff reported that it was exactly the same, real consistent in terms of the number of visitors. They had 15%, so it was more than a typical parent teacher conference night, and 28%, so it was less than typical parent teacher conference this night. As is typically the case when we run conferences like we had here in the fall, kind of slow for the first five hours, and then gets real busy in the last hour and a half, which stands to reason that's when people get off work. In general, a lot the same as the last several years. Three Lakes Elementary, 159 out of 162 student families showed up either in person or by phone. We had a very, the number of phone or video conferences has been going down, so we have still a handful, but not as many as in the past, but almost every classroom was 100% attendance.
Sure Camp, we had 90% of the parents were in person, and then 10% were by phone call. We did have one family that was, could not be reached. So, but other than that, everybody made contact with us.
I had to get that in depth, with the junior high. We had numbers-wise, we were about 65 to 66% of people coming in. I don't know about phone conferences, but that's how we measured it, so I'll give you better statistics next time, but that's kind of where we were at, so.
I think it's really remarkable. Again, I think it shows the connectedness of our parents, our community, you know, as a whole with the school and the staff, because also what's not reported here is, I believe our teachers do a really good job of keeping parents current. It's not waiting to a parent teacher conference before confirmation or contact is made to say, you know, we have an issue or we have a concern. That's an ongoing process, and I'm just really proud of this staff and especially the parents for being that involved. It's that involvement that leads to the kind of results and successes our kids are having. I would ask the principals if they feel that the current structure continues to be successful or, you know, and everything that is good, that can get better. Justin, would you think that maybe at the high school, if you're seeing five hours of kind of lull and then an hour, hour and a half of heavy, is that something as we're getting into calendar planning now, we're going to probably have to consider some differences? It might not be that equal means the same for everybody, and this is an area, if we could better address the high school needs versus the elementary or the junior high needs, I think it's something we should consider.
Yeah, I mean, if we don't do, we don't do things by appointment at the high school, it's stop in, and then it gets super hectic at the last few minutes, and then it's done. So, we could somehow adjust that would be, from the high school perspective, that'd be great, I don't know. I mean, the elementary seems to get pretty good connections and the items that we have, so.
Well, calendar is on my mind, and we're going to start discussion on calendar Monday after school with staff input, and then that'll be coming to you for your consideration. You know, I'm hoping by January meeting it's possible.
Can I just make a comment? So, one thing that, when you're looking at that too, I noticed, especially this year with the junior high, it seemed like there was a big, I mean, we waited almost like 30, 40 minutes, and it was like, and it was, I mean, and we weren't the only one, I mean, there was like a line, and so it was kind of a, I don't know, it was, I don't, not quite sure, and I think, and I think, well, I do know what happened, because there was a parent that was in there for like 30 minutes.
Yeah.
I mean, so like, take the timeframe, you know, so then that caused like this big, long line, so I don't know. So, that was a little frustrating. I know there's a lot of grumbling in the hallway with other parents.
We're looking at scheduling elsewhere next time around.
That's what I was going to ask. Maybe high school works a little bit better, that, a little bit, you know, looser, but maybe junior high...
More teachers too, too.
Yeah. Yeah, I worked there, and it took me a while to get it all. Before you go by one, and there's a few, so you go to the next one, but you can move on to the next one. If you only have two people waiting to see, then you're kind of stuck, right? So...
That's great feedback.
Yeah, we ran out of time. We were not able to see all the teachers because we worked, we didn't get there till later, so we didn't have time to get to everybody. And man, as soon as you made that announcement, people were out of there. I'm like...
It had been a long day.
Yes, yes, because they had been there all day, so, yeah.
That's great feedback, Michelle, thank you.
Yeah, and that's, I was kind of wondering that too. I mean, how many, how many people really come in for the first two hours or even three hours? I mean, is it, is it worth looking into maybe doing a two-night system just to help spread the, and then some scheduling, you know, especially people who know they need to take a little bit longer, but, you know, maybe leave a little bit of open time and a little bit of scheduled time just for some wandering, but I think you could, I think we could do this in the high school and junior high a little bit better, just based on the hours alone, and then maybe it wouldn't be quite so, such a toil on the teachers.
There's also constant feedback at the high school level, right? So, we are looking at their, their assignments and their grades every day and infident campus, so there is no, there's nothing really to see except maybe some behavioral or class cooperation at the high school level, because we have complete access to their performance in the classroom.
Yeah, in Northwoods, is there parent teacher conference interest at the high school level that matches what is at the elementary level?
Right.
That's typical, that's Northwood.
So, maybe that's a, an alternate or like a video or a phone conferencing option as well, that prevents the teachers from staying there all night if people aren't coming.
Yeah, we'll talk about it with the admin team and get some feedback from our teachers, you know, as we're looking at the calendar and potentially make that a better, better way to approach it.
Any other feedback? Thank you for those updates. Great job in the elementary schools, that's fantastic results. Next, we move on to School Forest Camp Three updates.
All right, I did put a letter in your board docs for you to review. We had received correspondence, which I feel comfortable talking about in open session because this is informational. We have been contacted, or I should say, our attorneys have been contacted by the plaintiffs, Leo Krevakis and Rebecca Nicky, that want to reopen discussion about a settlement as far as the property on Camp Three. As you all know, this has been an ongoing dragged-out process. October 23rd, we did go back into court, and Judge Sheek heard the case and went through the conditions that had been cited by the plaintiffs, and actually did a very thorough job addressing each of the areas brought up as to why they felt that Three Lakes School District or any school district for that matter should not be permitted to allow any kind of activity to be had on school property, whether it be onsite or offsite, if it involves using firearms such as a trap range gun. And so, what that resulted in was Judge Sheek said, I'm going to have you all come back with more for your, to present to your case, and he scheduled it for a further continuance hearing to happen then on, in February, February 21st. In the meantime, we've received a letter where they would like to open up again to the board consideration to settle this situation. They have proposed just one area that they'd like us to look at now, and that language is written as such, the district will not construct or operate a trap shooting range within three-quarters of a mile of the Krevakis-Nicky property unless and until Wisconsin law is clarified to explicitly allow such an exception as requested by WASB. WASB, our School Board Association, had done a resolution addressing this situation last year or the year before they cite it. We would not be as much interested in the WASB resolution, which we do believe in and support, but we're looking more closely to the state statutes. For that reason, I bring it forward so we are speaking about it in open session, and our public knows what is going on. This is the first movement we've had with this kind of extension of, let's have a discussion for quite some time, it's over months, maybe into the years area. And that is why we have a scheduled session for close, because we are going to hold an executive, an executive session this evening in which the board members can discuss this situation with our attorney and make some decisions about what we might want to do going forward. So, that is actually the extent of the report, but in full and transparent disclosure for our community, I want them to know that this is on the docket, and we have been continuing to address it. Does the board have any questions or comments for me at this point?
Hmm, for me?
And that is why we have a scheduled session for closed because we are going to hold an executive, the sets, uh, an executive session this evening in which the board members can discuss this situation with our attorney and make some decisions about what we might want to do going forward. So that is actually the extent of the report, but in full and transparent disclosure for our community, I want them to know that this is on the docket and we have been continuing to address it. Does the board have any questions or comments for me at this point?
None for me.
Very good. That's what I have on that one.
Thank you. Okay, next we move into district related positive happenings.
So Erin Walshleger and I spent the day painting the logo in there and doing some branding. And I think, and to complement our goals or to start at, then we also added, um, I did a canvas with our school mission statement on it for the front there. We're just going to extend that. I was kind of using the analogy, I think I got a new analogy during the meeting, I was thinking about this. So I, I recently was reading about stump burning and how when you burn stumps, there's the danger of it, you know, popping up other places because the roots can sit and fester for a while. And I feel like this whole project is kind of like that, it was like the start of a stump burning and now I'm seeing like fires pop up in other places. So, um, like Jason Stubbs came up to me after we had painted and he's like, you know, you, you could really use some positive words on the wall in the, in the, um, locker rooms and maybe over in the fitness center. You know, people are, I think you see that visual and you start having more ideas about what to do. And we're all kind of seeing blank walls everywhere and like, what can we do with them now? So it was, it's the start of something and I think that'll feed into the goals and the, um, referendum ideas that are out there as far as improving our schooling, doing some branding, so it was exciting to get that started.
Very good.
Thank you.
Hopefully the junior high office is, it looks like a eighteen twenties hospital.
Get your paintbrush out Phil.
Junior high, uh, well, we have an incentive trip coming up to the Potawatomi Center on the twenty-sixth. Uh, some other positive happenings, um, the high school fall play is coming up on Friday, seven PM. Saturday, seven PM and Sunday, uh, matinee, one PM. Uh, and the program is going to be called the Help Desk. So, please come out and join us and support our kids there. Uh, all of our winter sports are now in action. Boys' basketball and wrestling started Monday, so everybody's in full swing, so winter season is upon us.
Quick shout out to the, uh, Veterans Day programs, uh, how they were fantastic. Uh, again, becoming quite a community tradition, the, the auditorium was standing room only, you'd never seen that full, uh, any other time. So it's, it's really a good, good community event. Um, and it's, it's really cool to see the littles and the, and, and the bakes with the musical talents and, uh, veterans get fed their lunch by the NHS and food service and it's just a cool, cool day, um, in that regard. And then also want to give a shout out to the, um, for those of you who have high school kids, uh, there's been class meetings all week in auditorium with Mr. Bach and the class advisors, uh, implementing our ACP plan that our ACP, uh, teachers and committee have been working on for a couple of years now, uh, and starting to, uh, bubble into the classrooms, which is exactly what we wanted. And, uh, so if your, if your kids are coming home, talking a little bit more about what they want to be when they grow up, that's, that's an awesome thing because we're, um, taking some really concerted efforts to, uh, bring more relevance into the classroom. Not, not, not just our typical vocational classes, but the core academics as well. So, um, it's, it's good to see the kids getting involved with it now, finally, after a couple of years, so.
Go ahead. Let's go, Butch.
I think it's really good to reflect on, uh, what, uh, the community planning task force did tonight as a positive happening. And I, I say that because back in two thousand seven and two thousand nine, the effort that went into the comprehensive twenty-year plan went overboard on soliciting from our citizens how they feel about our community and the school. And one of the overarching, uh, things that came out from that is that our citizens really believe that Three Lakes does not have to mirror our surrounding communities. In other words, the citizens were saying, we don't feel we need to become a Eagle River or, or Lakeland, uh, Monarcha. Not that those are negative, but they want to hang on to intrinsic values. And I want to say with the task force, that's still alive as, as we talked about needs versus wants and, and the things that, those values that Three Lakes really embodies. And it's, uh, it's, uh, a nice, a nice niche and people see that, the citizens see that. So that's a really positive thing going back quite a few years and it's still alive today. So, um, I feel good about what the task force, um, summarized tonight and, uh, it reflects that.
Thank you, Butch.
Yeah, I just have a couple. Um, we did have our ribbon week right around, uh, Halloween, which all the kids guys enjoyed all the dress up days for that. Um, and then we had a eclene Justin, uh, well-attended Veterans Day program. Shout out to, uh, Jesse and Justin and then Garrett Mamby who plays taps every year for us. And then this Friday is grandparents day, so it's one of the bigger activities besides Secret Santa that brings a lot of community members in and shows their support, so we'll be setting up for that Friday.
Can you?
Uh, Todd, I have the same thing, Todd, basically, uh, we, we, uh, PTO ran a book fair. Uh, we haven't done that for a few years, that was well-attended. Um, I just like to publicly thank, I know we're not anywhere near done with this, but Amy Johnson has put in a ton of work into Act Twenty and the compliance pieces and, and her team and, I mean, the teachers in general, but Amy is spearheading that and there's, there's just so much that's going into that behind the scenes right now that I don't think people realize, but she's, I don't know how I'd be doing this without her, so I just publicly thank her for all of her work.
I thank you for that Steve, that's very important.
Um, I have one, uh, for Ms. Jen. Um, the media days that you've been doing for the teams are really cool. Not only for our public platform on Instagram and, and Facebook, uh, but it's really cool as a parent to not, to just have access to some of those photos. So, really great job, especially on, on marketing Three Lakes and that image, um, we're portraying to the community is great. Thank you.
The girls especially like media day.
They do. Hear all about it.
I had to cut them off last night.
Yes.
Did I add one?
Yeah.
Oh, oh, I have one more first, um, just to say it out loud, but Northland Pines challenged us to a food drive. So that's my advertisement for you, on the twenty-sixth, when basketball has a head-to-head, we have beat Northland Pines two years in a row, so let's make it three.
We crushed them at Pines last year.
At Pines. It wasn't close. It wasn't close. Yeah, so bring a lot of food, come to the games and enjoy basketball and it's a really good night. There you go, there's my.
You can ramp it up even more. I had the opportunity yesterday to go to Madison and, um, I attended, um, went to the state capitol with Al Betri from CISA nine and a couple of our other superintendents in the area. Eric Burke from Rhylander met us there as well as, um, Wendell Quezenberry from Tomahawk was there with me and, um, Andrea Sheridan was also there and Travis Grubbs from Rib Lake. And we had the opportunity to meet with Mary Falskowsky, we had scheduled it. And I just want to say how proud I was to represent Three Lakes in the Northwoods. She was very pleased to introduce us as a group to her, um, colleagues. Um, she is now going to be the president of the senate, which is, you know, quite a big step up. And as she introduced us, if we could have the schools in the rest of the state as the schools in CISA nine and their superintendents lead education, we would all be in a really good place. And I mean, you just felt the warmth and it was a really neat place to be and just to represent Three Lakes because she called us out multiple times as to what Three Lakes is doing and how we have the pulse of the community and the hard work that's being done. And it's wonderful because not that you necessarily accomplish the big task items, but it keeps us in the minds of the people. You know, we're north of twenty-nine, that's always kind of the joke. We have to keep that in the forefront because it's easy to forget about the smaller voter impact in the Northwoods. And I felt our presence was very appreciated and it was noted. And, um, we're going to keep, you know, making our presence known. And, um, again, it was, I felt like the proud mom of our, of our community and when she calls us out, you know, it, it's just that much more special to see this is what we're doing. And I did have the opportunity to also bring up, you know, the work that Act Twenty, um, they are aware, Mary is one of the people who is very aware that a lot of times things that are really good ideas for the right reasons, whether it's through the legislator or through DPI impose an excessively huge lift of work and the logistics to go with it. And then the lack of funding puts a huge burden on districts. And I am not negative, but I'm going to keep saying that because it has put a new degree of stress and expectations on our staff, our students, you know, our future. So, not to be negative, but that is the reality.
Thank you.
And it was fun.
Okay, any other?
I have one more.
Yes.
Um, just back to sports because last night and George, my friend, half George knows where I'm going with this. Um, we participated and they had a soccer banquet for the soccer team last night and the coaches did a great job of putting that on. And it was just, it was, I, I couldn't stop smiling and it was like, it was just, I mean, I even woke up this morning smiling. So it was a night, I mean, it took time to recognize each and every single player on that team. And it was just cool to see those boys up there, you know, so stoic and, and it was just, yeah. And somebody really cool might have won the fan award, I don't know.
Go mom.
George, come on, come on, come on. It was awesome.
Stacy, Brad and Phil and John Welshlow, they had very personal things to say about every single player.
Yes, it was so.
So they found something in each player that was really recognizable and it really endeared me to Brad to work that he's done with the soccer team. It was just really tremendous, like heartfelt connection with each student, with each athlete.
Yeah.
It was great.
Yeah. Very cool.
Just one more quick, a real positive thing, I want to thank the school district for allowing us the opportunity to set up our resource booth and table with information on awareness and prevention of human trafficking. And as a real positive thing, uh, both my wife and I have had feedback from parents with follow-up questions after doing that. And, uh, you know, it goes a long ways towards helping our students to remain safe, uh, especially with the, uh, online and social media, uh, predators that are out there. So that's, it's a real positive thing and parents see that and they feel good about it.
Thank you, Butch. Okay, going once. All right, next we'll move on to WASB correspondence updates.
Okay, the correspondence I have is, we have received our membership certificate, we get that every year, so we're all official again. And the congratulations and appreciation that we continue to be active board members. And then, um, we have a personal note that, from, um, Dan Ross Miller. He says, PS, I hope the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five school year is off to a great start and Three Lakes go Blue Jays. So that was kind of cool.
That's what I have for that one. So the next phase of, um, our meeting is to do a facility tour, um, of Sugar Camp. Ms. Reha, are you on board and ready?
Yeah.